Do I have a motion to reconvene an open session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The Board is now in open session. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution certifying the closed session?
Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Coker?
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the first personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/50-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Coker?
Aye. The motion carries. Is there a motion regarding the next personnel matter?
In case number 2024-25/51-HR, it is recommended that the superintendent's recommendation be upheld.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Coker?
Aye. The motion carries. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the March 11th, 2025 School Board Business Meeting to order. Before we begin the meeting this evening, I would like to thank everyone for attending the March 11th School Board Business Meeting and remind the audience that comments to this Board may only be made at the podium during the public comment period. Comments from the audience are prohibited and are in violation of Section 18.2-415 of the Code of Virginia, Disorderly Conduct in Public Places, and School Board Policy 6141. I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding so that we can conduct the business meeting in an orderly fashion. We will now have an invocation by Mrs. Hudgens, followed by a flag salute led by Mrs. Heffron.
Before tonight's invocation, we would like to take a moment to recognize and honor the life and legacy of Dr. Bob Lowry, who served as the Director of Magiel Walker Governor's School. Dr. Lowry made an indelible impact on the education community, shaping the lives of countless students, staff, and families throughout his tenure. Dr. Lowry was appointed as Director of Magiel Walker Governor's School in 2017. His joyful, fun-loving personality, his faith, and his passionate dedication to students are not only evident by his career accomplishments, but by the void that many now have in their hearts at his passing. He will truly be remembered by all who had the privilege of working with him. We invite you to join us in a brief moment of silence to reflect on Dr. Lowry's contributions and to honor his memory and his family. Thank you. I would also like to honor the life of Dr. Margaret Dabney, a lifelong educator who recently passed at the age of 104 on February 3rd, 2025. Dr. Dabney was a pioneer in her endeavors to identify and teach children with a broad spectrum of abilities and talents who might otherwise go unrecognized. Without her, literally thousands of talented, primarily minority youngsters in Richmond and many surrounding counties would not have achieved to their fullest potential. A former Dean of Education at Virginia State University, her career was marked by significant achievements, including the founding of Richmond Community High School and Appomattox Regional Governor's School, where her impact has been felt by many Chesterfield students who have had the opportunity to attend. We invite you to join us in a brief moment of silence to reflect on Dr. Margaret Dabney's contributions and to honor her memory and her family. Dear Lord, we come before you today with grateful hearts, seeking your wisdom and guidance as we gather to make decisions for our schools, students, teachers, and community. Thank you for the opportunity to serve and for the trust placed in us to shape the future of education. Lord, give us discernment to make choices that are just, fair, and beneficial to all. Fill us with patience, understanding, and a spirit of collaboration so we may work together in unity for the good of every child in our care. May our words and actions reflect your love, grace, and integrity. Help us to create an environment where every student is valued, inspired, and empowered to reach their full potential. Lord, let this meeting be filled with your peace and purpose.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's consent agenda includes: Agenda adoption, approval of the minutes from our February 25th, 2025 Budget Work Session, our February 25th, 2025 Business Meeting, our February 27th, 2025 Special Meeting, Memo Number 029-25 Recommended Personnel Actions, Memo Number 030-25 Acceptance of Donations, Resolution Recognizing March 2025 as Equity in Education Month, Memo Number 031-25 VSBA Business Honor Rule, Memo Number 032-25 FY2025 Transfer Across Appropriation Categories From Instruction to Technology, and Memo Number 040-25 FY2025 Application For and Acceptance of a New Grant From the VDOE. Are there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no additions or corrections to the consent agenda.
Are there any requests from a School Board member to separate an item from the consent agenda for discussion and individual action? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron?
Aye.
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Coker?
Aye. The motion carries. Mr. Smith, would you please announce our new administrators?
If I could ask Courtney Jones and Kimberly Parnell to come forward this time? Board members, with your action this evening, you've approved Courtney Jones as the Principal of the Western Area Elementary School effective July 1, 2025. Courtney received her Doctor of Education in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from Virginia Tech. She currently serves as the Principal at Grinch Hall Elementary. You also approved Kimberly Parnell as the Principal for Mosley Elementary School effective March 5, 2025. Kimberly received her Master's of Education Administration and Supervision from the University of Virginia. She currently serves as Assistant Principal at Mosley Elementary School. Please join me congratulating these two administrators.
Next, we have awards and recognitions. For our first award and recognition, I'd like to call up Dr. Yo and Mr. Hurd to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair Coker, members of the Board, and Dr. Murray. Well, good evening, Madam Chair Coker, members of the Board, Dr. Murray and Dr. Hi. We'd like to begin by thanking you for your continued support of our fine and performing arts programs throughout Chesterfield County Public Schools, and for taking the time during this important month to celebrate our talented students here in CCPS. Our agenda this evening includes student performances, as well as information about Arts Fest 2025, and a special artwork unveiling led by our students and teachers. Throughout March, our CCPS Art Fest offers a variety of opportunities to see and to hear the talents of Chesterfield County students in 13 different locations across our entire county. Starting now, the community can view art exhibitions from each of our 41 elementary schools, on display in all 10 of our Chesterfield Public Library branches, as well as the Baxter Perkins Center for the Arts in Education throughout the entire month of March. In addition, student artwork from our virtual art and music programs is posted on a special online gallery on the Division's website. The culmination of our Arts Fest will take place very soon, on March 22nd and 23rd next weekend, during the Secondary Fine and Performing Arts Showcase at Thomas Dale High School, featuring art exhibitions from all of our middle and high schools, as well as performing arts events as well. So again, thank you for your continued support and enthusiasm around the arts in our schools and community, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. In just a moment, you'll hear from the Meadowbrook-Marnock Corral, under the direction of Mr. James Barrick. I would like to thank these talented students and their teacher for officially kicking off our celebrations for Music in Our Schools Month. Our official theme this year for Music in Our Schools Month is "United Through Music." For 40 years, March has been designated by the National Association for the Music Education for Music in Our Schools Month. The positive impact of music education in the lives of students lasts a lifetime. Every day, in classrooms and rehearsal rooms, music educators dedicate themselves to reaching all students with life-changing musical experiences all over our county. We have approximately 300 performances scheduled in our schools annually. And in October, our students participated in marching band night, as well as a variety of chorus and orchestra events at the middle and high school levels. In November, we had several students selected to participate in all-state ensembles during the VMEA Conference. And January brought outstanding performances by our theater students in the one-act play competitions and by the All-County High School Symphony Band. As we start the month of March, district performance assessments for band, for guitar, orchestra, and our choral groups, and additionally, our show choir competitions have been underway. We look forward to March 22nd and 23rd when we will hear performances by our All-County Middle School Bands, Jazz Bands, All-County Guitar Ensemble, and Fiddle Fest on Saturday. And Sunday afternoon is filled with additional performances by the Specialty Center for the Art Students, which include dance, jazz band, musician-studio singers, and the Thomas Dale High School Performing Arts Department sharing their musical matinee performance of "Into the Woods." The precise schedule of performances for March 22nd and 23rd will be forthcoming, and April and May will also bring an abundance of wonderful musical and theatrical performances in our schools. So please check your individual school websites for up-to-date information and details. You won't want to miss all this excitement. I would now ask our Board members and superintendent
So can we give it up one more time for the Monica Choral Group? So it's really exciting to see our children perform. We didn't have to wait in line, we didn't have to buy tickets, so we got a free concert, and I appreciate that so much. And I have some trinkets in here, on behalf of the School Board, for you to pass out. And I won't ask everybody, because that would be too much, but I'll ask you, what is it like with these group of young ladies performing?
This is my 30th year of teaching, and it never gets old. Before, I was the coordinator of the Specialty Center for the Arts, but I decided to end my career to go back into the classroom, and it is absolutely the best decision that I have ever made. I love these girls, and I'm glad they showed you how we do, tonight. And so, that's all I have to say, though getting super emotional, but thank you.
Well, we were going to try and recognize Robin, it's a surprise, but I guess Jimmy, you might be up, so... Oh, here we go. Now, Robin, why don't you walk up to the... Well, Madam Chair and Board Members, before we recognize our remarkable art students, we have the privilege this evening of honoring Dr. Robin Yo, who is retiring after an extraordinary 31 years of service in CCPS, 13 of which in her current role, and 39 total years in public education. Throughout her career, Dr. Robin Yo has been a passionate advocate for the arts, shaping the performing arts curriculum across our district and touching the lives of countless students and educators. Personally, I've known Robin since I was in middle school. I couldn't call her that then, but I can now. And when she and my mother were colleagues at Manchester High School. From her time as a teacher to Assistant Principal to her role as Performing Arts Curriculum Specialist, Dr. Yo has worked tirelessly to ensure that every student has access to the transformative power of the performing arts. Her dedication, leadership, and vision have left a lasting legacy that will continue to inspire future generations. She is well-known for her visionary leadership, her ability to inspire both students and staff, and her deep understanding of how the performing arts can foster creativity, critical thinking, and emotional expression, which is on full display right now. Her work as a specialist expanded that vision, as she worked tirelessly to create a curriculum that not only celebrates the performing arts, but also integrates them into the heart of our educational experience. Her expertise, passion, and advocacy for the arts have set the standard for what a high-quality arts education looks like. So on behalf of the School Board and our entire community, we thank you, Robin, for your years of service, and wish you all the best in your retirement. Job well done.
Members of the Board, we would like to share with you a special presentation tonight from five of our high schools to unveil a new permanent art display here in the public meeting room, to be installed this spring, complete with plaques commemorating the teachers and students, as well as an artist statement the students wrote about the creative process of this project. So each artwork you're about to see represents one of our five magisterial districts and is a project of months of planning, research, and creativity, led by our art students. After each school unveils the work, one of our students will be speaking to you about their vision and approach to the creative process, that the entire team of students collaborated to create these masterpieces. So first, I'd like to introduce Chiara Vincenti of Thomas Dale High School, who will be sharing
Yeah, all the students that participated in this, please come up and stand with your panel.
Good evening. Our artwork is a tribute to the Bermuda District, a place woven together by history, industry, and nature. Framed within the borders of a postage stamp, this piece symbolizes connection between past and present, land and water, tradition and progress. Through vibrant colors and flowing compositions, we have captured the essence of our district, where movement, growth, and legacy shape the community. At the heart of the composition, a winding road takes viewers on a journey through Bermuda's landmarks. Snake Road, a nickname for Roughen Mill Road, curves through the landscape, passing Sunset Memorial Cemetery, where the descending sun and warm color palette honor those who came before us. The historical significance of the district is further highlighted by Henricus Historical Park, with the architectural form of Mount Mulady subtly hiding a single Lego, a nod to Chester's evolving landscape, now home to a new Lego production facility. Rising behind Thomas Dale High School, the Water Tower stands as a familiar beacon. Below the flowing waters of the James and Appomattox Rivers mirror the movement of people and time, just as the I-95 sign marks Bermuda as the only district with an interstate bringing travelers from across the country. The land itself tells a story of cultivation and innovation. A budding tobacco plant pays homage to the crop that established the district's early economy, while a spiraling strawberry plant represents the Plenty Richmond Farm, the first in the world to grow indoor vertically farmed berries at a large scale. High above it all, a train's winding smoke and the distant Verena Enon Bridge reinforce the theme of connection, linking past to present, industry to nature, and generations of families to the land they call home. Through this piece, we celebrate Bermuda's rich tapestry, a district defined by movement, legacy, and an enduring sense of place. I'd now like to introduce Elizabeth Radgousky of Cloverhill High School, who will be sharing details about our Cloverhill District artwork.
My name is Libby Radgousky, and I'm a senior at Cloverhill High School and a member of our National Art Honor Society. When our NAHs chapter was asked to create an artwork that visually represented the Cloverhill District, we decided to really dig into the history of this area. We did some research on historical industries that originated work of the Dale District. This painting, created in collaboration with the Meadowbrook High School Art Club, the Art Department, and the students of MBK, represents the most prominent landmarks within the Dale District of CCPS. These landmarks are as follows: a spiral slide representing Harry G. Daniel Park, an airplane representing the many planes fading into the skies from the Chesterfield Airport, and a metal bridge portraying the structures in Pocahontas State Park and the Chesterfield Courthouse. This art piece wouldn't have been possible without the contributions of both the Meadowbrook Art Club, hosted by Ms. Lane and Mr. Ferrero, and the students of Ms. Lane's class. The students, both in Art Club and in Ms. Lane's class, originally began this painting with a simple, gradated background of a combination between blue and white, taking much inspiration from the colors of Meadowbrook and Elsie Bird High School, which are navy blue and gold and navy blue and white respectively. Afterwards, the students in the Art Club and Ms. Lane's class began painting the landmarks by sketching rough outlines in pencil, and then began outlining the landmarks with the usage of white paint. These outlines were further refined to create uniformity. Afterwards, some students began to create multiple zentangle patterns as a way to continue filling in the space that was left behind by the painting of the landmarks. As a result, the students were able to successfully create a simple, magnificent piece of art in commemoration of the multiple landmarks within the Dale District of CCPS. At first glance, this painting may just be a simple, wondrous illustration of the landmarks of the Dale District. However, I'd argue that this painting represents something much greater: the fostering of creativity amongst students. This is perfectly shown by the collective effort that involved the creative minds of the students in both the Art Club and Ms. Lane's class, which helped with solving many of the problems that were faced during the art process itself. With the collaboration of these students, complex problems were solved with creative solutions. And for that, I sincerely thank the students of the MBK Art Club, the teachers of the Art Department, and the students for continuing to foster human expression with art. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Passy Hatcher of Matowica High School, who will be sharing details about our Matowica District artwork. Thank you.
When Matowica High School was asked to create a piece of art that represents our district, we decided to focus on the beauty of Pocahontas State Park. First, we researched the history of the area, determining that the park was named after Chief Powhatan's daughter, Pocahontas, also referred to as Matowica. The scene we built encompasses the features of the park, the symbolism of Virginia, and the history of our community. We decided to complete our piece using multimedia, so that the viewer can get a true sense of the environment. The river was painted with watercolor, the stones are made of clay, and the tree trunk was textured with real bark. Leaves and moss were collaged together to make up a foliage, and the bridge was constructed from tiny twigs. The canoe was made of leather, has a red, common Native American symbol for the sun on the side, and sitting atop its edge, a red cardinal showing homage to our state Virginia. I'd like to introduce Brinkley Porter of James River High School, who will be sharing details about our Melothean District artwork.
I created this piece with the history and environmental aspects of the Melothean District in mind. I used places like the Melothean Mines and the old Bon Air Structures to show the culture of our county. The James River flows through this piece, bringing the viewer's eye to the unique qualities the district has to offer. Although the James River is just at the tip of our district, it plays a huge part in creating a community for the Melothean District. It gets opportunities for our schools to explore new sports like crewing and fishing. This playful energy in greenery shows the nature that the county has to offer and the effects that it puts on everyone to feel included. I am very thankful for this opportunity to create a piece that represents the area I grew up in and what is to come.
Wow. I want to say thank you again to all the participating students, teachers, for your creativity that will last a lifetime here in the public meeting room. So thank you again. Awesome job. And I also want to thank the board again for your continued support.
Absolutely. There are no words to your talent. There really is not. The texture, the 3D, the color, the time that you have spent on this, and I know some of you have called out other departments that have helped you, really symbolizes what Chesterfield County is about, which is no one person, right, but all of us together make all of this come to fruition and come to life. And we can see it very clearly. And congratulations to each and every one of you, and thank you to your principals, to your teachers, to the other departments that help out to champion this and to make this really come to life. And the fact that it's going to be hanging out here, so any visitor that comes through or citizen that walks through, you know, there's a sign and a story in each of these pictures about the districts that we have the honor of representing, but that we also have the honor of calling Chesterfield County. We can be individuals, right, but together, we make the county, and together, we make Chesterfield County Public Schools even better, and that's because of what you all are doing right here. So thank you. Can we please give them another round of applause? Can we just leave them up here for the rest of the board meeting? We don't have to take them down, do we? We can leave them up here somewhere? But no, seriously, thank you very much. As you come by this way, there's a little something in here for you all. Would love you to have that. And again, congratulations. Thank you.
Take some.
Congratulations, everybody. Love it.
Congratulations, everybody. Love it.
Okay. Right, so this is where the pictures are made, so you can get up and talk.
Thank you again to all of our wonderful performers and artists who helped celebrate this evening. It is always a great time to see what our students, our talented students, do and to be able to celebrate them. Board members, in recognition of Youth Art and Music in Our Schools Month, we have two resolutions before us this evening. Mr. Hurd and Dr. Yo, please join me, or Ms. Hudgens, in front of the dais for the reading and presentation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolutions?
Recognizing March 2025 as Music in Our Schools Month, whereas the study of music helps young people improve their skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity, and whereas music education in the schools includes a broad range of music and active music experiences, and whereas music and the other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment, and whereas public schools prepare children for a productive role in society, and whereas the National Association for Music Education has designated March as Music in Our Schools Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chesterfield County School Board endorses the observance of Music in Our Schools Month as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of music education and encourages teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. The Chesterfield County School Board rededicates itself to the maintenance of a music education program that positively influences each child's place in its care.
Board members.
And I got an art one, too.
Oops, I'm sorry. I can't see.
Recognizing March 2025 as Youth Art Month, whereas art education contributes powerful educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students, including the following: Art education develops critical and creative problem-solving skills. Art education teaches design, thinking, and reinforces the concept of craftsmanship. Art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities. Art education gives students a deeper understanding of cultures, values, and beliefs. Art education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. And art education uses student learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics to create new meaning and learning for each student. Whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including art experiences in each student's education. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Chesterfield County School Board officially recognize March as Youth Art Month, endorse the observance of Youth Art Month, and encourage the support of quality school art programs for our children and youth.
Congratulations. One moment.
Board members, you have heard the two resolutions before us, may have a motion to adopt the resolutions as read. Is there a second?
Second.
Board members, is there any discussion?
I just want to say, I'll leave it to Mrs. Hudgens for the comments from the board.
Perfect. There has been a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Read that again. There has been a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolutions have been adopted.
Okay, it better be good. So first of all, that display of both the art but the music was wonderful. So for that, we were really just honored to hear, and you guys did such a great job. And Mr. Barrick was also my daughter's music teacher for four years, and it's great to see him doing what he does best. So, well done, Yo. You just told me that. You plucked him from here to here to here, and you can tell... Art and music, what it does for students is unmatched. It finds places for kids that might not have another place, and it teaches them that, oh, wait, you're actually good at something. And that, you can't put into words. So what you do, you may never know the impact that you have made, but you are making an impact, and you have made an impact, and for that, we are eternally grateful. So, thank you. Thank you again. Congratulations. Do y'all want to say something? You want to say... Okay, we done? Fantastic.
Thank you again to all of our performers and to Mr. Hurd and to Dr. Yo. Next, we have recognition of student success, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask our National Merit semifinalists to come forward this time? In October, we celebrated students who were named National Merit semifinalists. Tonight, we celebrate our semifinalists who advanced to become National Merit finalists. Congratulations to these students who are now eligible for National Merit scholarships. Kardakia Goel from Bird High School, Sabrina Gernhardt from Melothean High School, I think Sabrina's actually at an event this evening, Agastya Kalya, hope I got that correct, Ainsley Ogilvy from Appomattox Regional Governor's School, Michael Clausner, Samantha Schrapert, Brendan Strimmler, Reese Wu from Maggie L. Walker Governor's School. Please join me congratulating these National Merit finalists.
Congratulations. So, this group was up here two months ago as semifinalists, right? And now, we're finalists. So I'm going to tell you what that means, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong. So, the PSATs, y'all hit it out of the park, and you're in the top 1% of the nation. Okay, that's fine. Fantastic. That's just semifinalists. And then, they write an essay, and their principal writes a letter, right, a letter of recommendation, and then, you have to take your SAT or your ACT just to make sure the PSAT score was not a fluke, right? Okay. And clearly, it wasn't. So, well done. You guys are shining stars. We are really proud of you, and, you know, congratulations, and good luck in the, you know, next round. Congratulations, guys. Would you guys like to say a little something? You have the mic. Little something? Okay. All right. Thanks. Congratulations, guys. Well done.
Good job.
If I could ask our representatives from the Paths of Clover Literary Magazine to come forward this time? All of our representatives. Paths of Clover Literary Magazine from Clover High was recognized as a Realm First Class magazine by the National Council of Teachers of English. Recognizing excellence in art and literary magazines, RELM, received 422 magazine nominations from 46 states and five countries, and bestowed its top award on just 125 publications. In addition to winning this top award, Clover High's 2024 edition of Paths of Clover previously won BHSL Trophy Class Designation in the Magazine Division, and won first place in the American Scholastic Press Association Competition. English teacher Dan Wallach is the faculty representative. Please join me congratulating Dan.
So, yes, congratulations.
The resolutions have been adopted.
Okay, it better be good. So first of all, that display of both the art but the music was wonderful. So for that, we were, we were really just honored to hear, and you guys did such a great job. And Mr. Barrick was also my daughter's music teacher for four years, and it's great to see him doing what he does best. So, well done you, you just told me that you plucked him from here to here to here, and you can tell, man, you... Art and music, what it does for students is unmatched. It is, it finds places for kids that might not have another place, and it teaches them that, oh, wait, you're actually good at something. And that, you can't put into words. So what you do, you may never know the impact that you have made, but you are making an impact and you have made an impact, and for that, we are eternally grateful. So, thank you, thank you again, congratulations. Do y'all want to say something? You want to say? Okay, we done? Fantastic.
Thank you again to all of our performers and to Mr. Hurd and to Dr. Ye. Next, we have recognition of student success, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask our National Merit semifinalists to come forward this time? In October, we celebrated students who were named National Merit semifinalists. Tonight, we celebrate our semifinalists who advanced to become National Merit finalist. Congratulations to these students who are now eligible for National Merit scholarships. Kardakia Goel from Bird High School, Sabrina Gernhardt from Lithian High School, I think Sabrina is actually at an event this evening, Agastha Kalya, hope I got that correct, Ainsley Ogilvy from Appomattox Regional Governor's School, Michael Clausner, Samantha Shrapurt, Brendan Strimler, Reese Wu from Maggie L. Walker Governor's School. Please show me congratulating these National Merit finalists.
Congratulations. So, this, this group was up here two months ago as semifinalists, right? And now we're finalists, so I'm going to tell you what that means, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong. So, the PSATs, y'all hit it out of the park and you're in the top 1% of the nation. Okay, that's fine, fantastic. That's just semifinalists. And then they write an essay and their principal writes a letter, right? Letter of recommendation. And then you have to take your SAT or your ACT just to make sure the PSAT score was not a fluke, right? Okay. And, and clearly it wasn't. So, well done, you guys are shining stars, we are really proud of you, and, you know, congratulations and good luck in the, you know, next round. Congratulations, guys. Would you guys like to say a little something? You have the mic. Little something? All right, thanks, congratulations, guys, well done.
Good job.
If I could ask our representatives from the Paths of Clover Literary Magazine to come forward at this time? All of our representatives. Paths of Clover Literary Magazine from Clover High was recognized as a Realm First Class magazine by the National Council of Teachers of English. Recognizing excellence in art and literary magazines, RELM, received 422 magazine nominations from 46 states and five countries, and bestowed its top award on just 125 publications. In addition to winning this top award, Clover High's 2024 edition of Paths of Clover previously won BHSL Trophy Class Designation in the Magazine Division and won first place in the American Scholastic Press Association Competition. English teacher Dan Wallach is the faculty representative. Please show me congratulating Dan.
So, yes, congratulations. We've been appreciating the work that you've been doing, helping your students find success in the literary world, and it's, nobody can top it, clearly, right? Do you want to share anything about why, why the literary magazine or your work with the students?
So the punk rock thing to do would be to come up and say, "Fund Publications Now", right? Like, "Give us money", right? So that. I have the easiest job in the world, I got to show up to a room full of great kids and just believe in them, and they do all the work, and then I get to come up here and get awards, it's great. We didn't publish during the pandemic, I've told this story, it totally derailed Paths of Clover, and one of my goals when I came on into the school at that time, I wanted to rebuild it, and told the kids that, and they just ran with it. So, here we are, we're doing really well. Some of you out there are using AI to send emails, some of you out there are cutting corners, and I won't call home, I'm not going to call your parents, I might give you the disappointed, not mad, but disappointed speech. I spend my day with kids who reject that, who reject people telling them to take the easy way, to cut corners, to let the machine do it for you. They have hearts and they have minds, and they want to make something with it. Some of the students from Clover Hill, the art students, are featured in our magazine, so it's, it's easy to win when you have that shine. Let's bet on the kids who want to make things. Let's bet on the kids who want to put themselves out there, who don't want the computer to do it, who want to truly write and create, and, and that's the point, right? That's why we're here. So, that's all I'm going to say, is I got to spend my days with some of the coolest kids and the best students, and it's just the best job in the world.
We have a bag as well. But congratulations.
Thanks so much. Another round of applause for Clover Hill.
If I could ask our friends at CICLA to come forward at this time? The Office of School and Community Nutrition Programs within the Virginia Department of Education recognized three schools statewide during National School Breakfast Week, which was March 3 through 7. CICLA was one of those top schools, otherwise known as Chester Early Childhood Learning Academy. The award recognizes schools that demonstrate excellence and follow breakfast practices like increasing protein options and lowering sugar and sodium content. On March the 6th, a delegation of state and local leaders visited CICLA to deliver the award and congratulate the school in the success. Please show me congratulating them.
What an honor. One out of three in the state, that is amazing, but not surprised. CICLA is a special gem in the Bermuda District, and Dr. Harris, Dr. Harris now, does a fabulous job, and so I know, it doesn't surprise me that your food service is also knocking it out of the park, and under your leadership, Berkeley as well. So, congratulations, and I of course need to give you the mic to brag about CICLA.
Thank you so much, we are very grateful, thank you, to receive the recognition from VDOE, and I'm here to accept this recognition on behalf of Jenny Deal, our cafeteria manager. This really goes to her and her team for just collaborating with me and her ability to be willing to find ways that we can provide a very nutritious breakfast option for our students at CICLA. The youngest scholars in the Bermuda District need a great breakfast to learn through play, which is what we believe at CICLA, and she, Jenny Deal's always open to just collaborating with me to making sure our breakfast program runs smoothly. And I'm very grateful for her support and grateful for the collaboration with the Nutrition Services Department. Would you like to say anything?
I was just going to echo Dr. Harris and thank Ms. Deal and team at CICLA, they do a fantastic job serving the students there. Also want to thank, in my department, Casey Dickinson and Ronnie Lapel for working with the VDOE to nominate, and I think it's a well-deserved award.
I agree. Thank you, congratulations.
If I could ask Nicole Winter to come forward at this time? Cosby High History Teacher Nicole Winter is one of just 55 educators across the country who was selected by the National History Day for its Silent Heroes Research Project. In order to honor the service and sacrifice of members of the US military, this initiative involves researching and creating profiles of US men and women who died in World War I, World War II, the Korean War, or the Vietnam War. Nicole Winter's research focuses on Private First Class Anthony John Pepper, who graduated from Tomstow High School in 1966, enlisted in the Marines, and was killed in 1968. When complete, the research will be shared on the Silent Heroes website and used in educational materials of the American Battle Monuments Commission. Please show me congratulating Nicole.
So, when I was looking at the, the order tonight, and I found it very coincidental that, one, you're, you're studying a Chesapeake County Public School graduate, but also a fellow Marine, and I had the... There we go. It runs deep in the Marine Corps, it runs deep in the Marine Corps. But, the, the thing that really stood out to me was you didn't have to do this. And you're one of 55 in the entire nation that was selected to bring light to and honor a Chesapeake County Public School graduate who made the ultimate sacrifice for all of us. That has to be so moving, and I would imagine driving force behind getting that story out and understanding more, and, and so I'd love to know more, and I'm sure there's others who would like to as well, so would you please share with us a little bit about your passion behind that, and, and also where has this led you that you didn't realize it would take you?
Let me start by saying I'm the daughter of a Marine Vietnam veteran, the daughter-in-law of an Army veteran from Vietnam as well, Vietnam War. I am pleased to share this recognition with Chesterfield students past and present. My current historical research class is the one doing the research behind this. They have tracked the life of Private First Class, really, he went by Tony Pepper, Thomasdale graduate, from his childhood, his family dynamics, his schooling, going through old yearbooks, really piecing together his life story in his short 20 years, and then his experience in the Vietnam conflict, and ultimately at Qaisan. And so it has been delightful to hear them really take ownership of Tony's life and share amongst themselves the breakthrough moments and the details and the, the moments of his life with each other. At the same time, of course, we're, we're celebrating the life of, of Tony, and our partner, and this is the nice surprise that I found, is his younger sister, a Meadowbrook graduate of '74, who has penned, if you will help me hold this again, her memoir of her brother, and I have been lucky enough to correspond with her, and we've talked by phone, and I had to explain to her what Cosby High School was, because it's been a while. But now we will be in touch, students and Carrie Pepper, and so it's really full circle. She's delighted to have our students just taking on the life of her brother, and we are delighted to be adding to her research as well. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If I could ask the team from the Department of Management and Budget to come forward at this time? The Department of Management and Budget continues its strength of winning top awards for budget documents. The Chesapeake County Public Schools comprehensive budget document for the 11th year was recognized with the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. This meritorious budget award was given for excellence in preparation and issuance of the school division's fiscal year 2025 operating budget. The CCPS budget for fiscal 2025 also won the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association, also for the 11th year. This award represents a significant achievement and reflects the commitment to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. Please show me congratulating the Department of Management and Budget.
I think I know why I get picked for this recognition every year, being in the accounting and budget world and my other job. I know the long hours and the hard work that you put into handling all of the money that runs through CCPS and getting our budget recognized for the 11th year, which is amazing. So thank you so much for all that you do, all the hours that you put in, and all the hard work in keeping our, our money straight and, and flowing through, so thank you. Would you like to say a few words about what makes budgeting fun for you?
Well, I, actually, I can't take any of the credit for this award because I just started, but I would like to thank this hardworking, small but mighty team, and their hard work and dedication every year. We have fun, we do, with numbers, so, I think, yeah, yeah. Especially this time of year when it's kind of quiet, we'll work on the new budget books.
There you go. Would you? No, okay. Well, thank you, thank you so much for all that you do.
If I could ask Jamie Barrick and Carolyn Greider to come forward at this time? Virginia Commonwealth University recently honored two music teachers in Chesapeake County Public Schools. VCU selected Jamie Barrick as a 2024 Outstanding Music Educator, and VCU also selected Carolyn Greider the 2024 VCU Outstanding Music Educator Young Eala My Award. Please show me congratulating them.
So I'm a Glee Club, Glee Club chorus kid, so this is special for me, and I, what I appreciate most about music, and I'm going to ask you to answer this question, too, is, for me, it gave me a place to belong, right? And so, some of us are not explored, exploring every option we can have in elementary school, because that's when I first joined Glee Club. A little bit awkward, a little bit taller than the boys, and not necessarily the best athlete at the time, and so Glee Club embraced me, and the chorus embraced me, and then I found my voice there for this. So it empowered me, and I wanted to know, what did music do for you?
Okay, well, music has been in my life ever since I can remember, and music was my safe place and where I felt like myself. So I wanted to provide that space for all other kids, and Jamie Barrick also, who won the outstanding award, was actually my chorus teacher and director in high school, and I, he was a huge mentor and helped me through so many things that music comes with performing, and I don't like performing, but he helped me realize that sharing that with others is such a special thing, and it's not all about how you sound, it's just sharing a passion that can't be seen and that can only be felt. And I love being able to share that with the kids every single day, so thank you.
Thank you.
So Jamie had to take the girls back on the bus, and so he had to leave, and of course, I can say that in 1996, I was teaching at James River High School, and I got to hire a second teacher, and Jamie was fresh out of college, and I got to hire him as my second teacher, and we have been thick as thieves, fast friends ever since, and he truly is a wonderful, wonderful educator. So, on his behalf, I'm accepting this, but we really do appreciate what he has done for all of our students, so thank you, Jamie.
If I could ask the representatives from ITAC and the Jewish Community Federation of Richmond to come forward at this time? Each year, the Employer Accommodation Program of the Virginia School Board Association provides school board members an opportunity to thank their employers for providing the support and encouragement that is often needed to perform their school board duties. Their connection is an integral part of public education, which is the cornerstone of this community. We recognize ITAC for supporting School Board Chair Ann Coker, who is in her second term representing the Bermuda District. We also recognize the Jewish Community Federation of Richmond for supporting school member Dot Heffron, who is also in her second term representing the Clover District. Please show me congratulating these community partners.
I just personally want to thank you, Bruce and ITAC, for all the support that you've given me throughout my 25 years at ITAC, but more, most importantly, when I decided to run for the school board and just supporting me in this passion that I have, so I thank you and ITAC for just being there for me, and I really appreciate everything, so, little gift and certificate. Thank you.
I told my CEO to take the night off tonight, so he's not here, but the Jewish Community Federation of Richmond does a lot of really great work, and in our community and overseas and in Israel, and I'm just very fortunate to be able to have both of my jobs, give me the opportunity to put back into the community that has given me so much, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I'm glad to, for the recognition for my employer.
We just got word that we had a recognition plan for one of our partners, PTC, and they cannot attend this evening, so we'll bring them back at a future board meeting. At this time, though, we want to recognize the REB Awards winners. If I could ask Brian Russell to come forward at this time, as well as Nick Olson? The REB Awards for distinguished educational leadership honor central Virginia principals to go beyond day-to-day demands to create an exceptional educational environment. One principal from each local school system, Chesapeake, Hanover, Richmond, is honored annually, with each winner receiving a $10,000 grant for individual use and an additional $20,000 for school projects. The Community Foundation for a Greater Richmond and the REB Foundation oversee the awards. Nominations come from members of the school community and the general public. Chesapeake County Public Schools principals who are finalists this year include Brian Russell, Principal of the Career and Technical Center, Nick Olson, Principal of Salem Church Middle School, and MJ Rodney, Principal of Providence Middle School. Ms. Shatters?
So before I give my remarks about them, I wanted to give them both an opportunity to talk about the project that you're going to be working on, so I'll start with Brian.
Yeah, so the REB Award project that I chose is that for tech centers, we have a unique breed of teachers, they love what they do, but they also come straight from industry, and so 95% of our staff, they're putting down their tools, they're putting down their tool belts to return to work as teachers, and so that's a big transition for our staff, and again, they love what they do, but honing those skills to make sure that they can understand pedagogy, it's one of the things that we want to improve on for our schools, so that's one thing that we discussed as our REB Award. The second piece is also to make sure that we want to give back and, and also support the, the members of our, our community that support our students, so whether it be our So, whether it be our business advisors, our community partners, we want to create an alumni foundation for those who have either supported our students or who were former students who are now in a business that will come back and support our current students. So, that's just two of the things that we are honing on to make our school better.
At Salem, there's probably no more important place than our library, and I don't think it's just at Salem. I think the public library is the unsung hero in all of our communities. And so, we've worked to make our library move from a place where students are shushed and told to find information in a reference book into where they're now allowed to exclaim "wow" because of the things they're learning. And so, this prize money is really cool because it's going to turbocharge that effort. Every student deserves a place that they can both practice their literacy skills but also see who they can become and what the world could become, and that's what the magic of books does for each and every one of our kids. And so, this money will go to diversifying our books, it will go to diversifying our library programming, but more importantly, it will allow us to do things like the Library of Things, which pairs a book with an actual thing that students can take home and extend learning with their families, like a waffle maker or ukulele or crochet set. And it will also allow us to continue to transform our during-the-day clubs, extracurricular activities. Every student deserves a chance to participate in a club or activity, but not every student has an equal opportunity because they can't have a ride from school to home after the bus leaves. And so, once a month at Salem, we reorganize our day to make sure that every one of our students has the opportunity for a student-led club. This year, we had 27 opportunities. This grant will just allow us to offer so many more. So, we're really excited and honored to be able to bring this home to the families of Salem.
Sound like some awesome programs, right? So, I get the honor of announcing who the winner is, and the winner this year, because they're both in my district, so that's why I get to do this. So, I'm a winner regardless, is Salem Middle School, Nick Olson. I don't get to give you the money. John gets to give you the check. And our runner-up is also Brian Russell, so he's also getting a check to do with his program as well. I just want to say that for Nick, winning this award this year is super special to me. If you're not familiar with what happens at Salem Middle, you're missing out, right? Because Nick's heart bleeds Salem, right? Everything he's doing in that building and the teachers and the staff in that building are pouring love into our children, and it's beautiful to see when you walk through the building, you can feel that. And for you to get this recognition now, just, I yelped, okay? I'm glad I didn't do it here, but I'm so excited for what you're going to do. And the Library of Things, right, and the clubs, that is a thing that we've talked about as a board, about extracurricular activities for our children and giving them opportunities to participate. And until we can come up with a plan, they have a plan. Once a month, they get to do all the things: volleyball, comic books, whatever, Pokemon, sorry, not comic books, Pokemon. They get to do all the things, so they get an opportunity to experience the club life during school hours. And that is very creative on our teachers to adjust their schedules to do that, but they're all pouring in to our children there. And I just wanted to acknowledge everything that you're doing there, and it's so appreciated. I am so proud of you. So, let's give them another hand, our REB Award winner and runner-up.
Next, we have recognition of outstanding driver performance with Ms. Drew.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board Members. I'm excited again to be here to recognize our drivers that we have chose for Drivers of the Month. There are many drivers that we could have recognized, and my team had the task of choosing just one who exemplify excellence and dedication to represent their area. So, our February 2025 Drivers of the Month that are being recognized for outstanding driver performance is, for Area 1, Tracy Hubbard. She drives Bus 686. Tracy has six and a half years of service. Her managers say that she is a true example of a team player. She steps up in a challenging situation and helps out whenever needed. You can tell that she truly loves her role here with CCPS because whenever you are around her, she radiates love for her students, the coordinators, and the school staff. She has a great sense of humor, too. That's from me. We are grateful to have such a wonderful person on our team. For Area 2, we have Victor Nguyen. He drives Bus 500. Victor has four months of service. Victor is always willing to help out whenever he is needed, and in such a short time, he is able to cover any route with ease and without hesitation. Area 3, Virginia Wilfong. She drives Bus 645. She has two years of service. Virginia says that "I love getting to see the excitement on the kids' faces every day as they get on the bus." Area 4, Karen Hamm. Bus 768, 17 years of service. When faced with a difficult and potentially dangerous situation, Karen handled it as a trained professional would. She kept her students safe and waited for the proper assistance to arrive, and we are very proud of her. Area 5 is being represented by Amber Holt, who is the Area 5 manager. Her driver is Atoria Ransom, Bus 954. Atoria has three years of service. Atoria says being a bus driver is similar to being a superhero. Every day, we get the opportunity to make a difference in our students' and staff's lives. Let's continue to make a positive impact on our students and staff.
Congratulations on being the best drivers that we have out there this month. That is a big deal. That's congratulating you, too. It is a big deal. Not everybody can do this. Your accolade was pretty impressive. You just got right in, you just can do everything really fast. It's amazing. I know that, I think I'm a great driver, but people who ride with me don't. So, not everyone can do this, so well done you. You're the first face that they see in the morning, last face they see in the afternoon. What you do matters. It can set the tone for their day, and then it can make a bad day good. So, it is a big deal. Thank you for doing all of that and keeping them safe. So, thank you so much.
Like, say a little something? I'll say something. So, I'm representing Atoria, and she is a true superhero for Area 5. She shows up for our students every day, and she just takes the greatest care of our Thank you again, all right.
Next, we have recognition of outstanding food service employees, Mr. Dumbreck.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Murray, and Mr. Roberts, thank you as always for the opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding food nutrition services team members. Last week, our department celebrated National School Breakfast Week with a theme of "Crew Into School Breakfast." As always, our team went above and beyond decorating their service lines and dressing like detectives, which included a surprising amount of trench coats and fedoras being worn in cafeterias last week. We also had the opportunity to once again collaborate with some of our graphic design students at Manchester High School to create some outstanding posters to help spread the word about breakfast. Not only does this meal give our team the opportunity to express some creativity, but allows for them to highlight what is arguably the most important meal of the day for growing students. Also, during National School Breakfast Week, our department had the privilege of honoring Dr. Leslie Harris from Chester Early Childhood Learning Academy as the CCPS Breakfast Champion for 2425, due to her unwavering support for breakfast at our school. We are incredibly thankful for the support we received, not only from Dr. Harris, but all of the other administrators throughout the county. Feeding all of our students is a team effort, and we have an outstanding one to work with. Our honorees this evening are, honorees this evening are Thomas Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins is a Food Service Associate at Metoica Middle School, and he's been with the county for five years. He says, "The best part of my job is knowing that by ensuring that no child grows hungry, I get to help them succeed academically." Next, we have Lloyd White. Mr. White is a Food Service Associate at Rubius Middle School, and he's been with the county for one year. He says, "The reason I love my job is that it's one of the best jobs I've ever had, and the students and staff are amazing." Next, we have Darlene Bolden. Ms. Bolden is a Food Service Associate at Bailey Bridge Middle School. She's been with the county for five years. She says, "The best part of my job is feeding the students and making sure they enjoy their lunches. It means a lot to work with good people." Next, we have Zita Smith. Ms. Smith is a Food Service Associate at Salem Church Middle School, and she's been with the county for six years. She says, "It's a privilege and honor to serve the students, my colleagues, and my managers. This is what I love doing, to be of service, to support, and to encourage all." And finally, we have Lisa Thurston. Ms. Thurston is a Food Service Associate at Hining Elementary School. She's been with the county for seven years. She says, "The most rewarding aspect of being a food nutrition services employee is the opportunity to connect with and positively impact students every day by providing healthy, nourishing meals, a friendly face, and a listening ear."
Let's give our food nutrition workers a round of applause. I'm already getting the, don't give me the microphone. Well, I just want to say on behalf of the school board, thank you so much for all that you do. You know, you know the work that you do, and you know how important it is, but I hope that our whole community recognizes that your commitment to making sure that each child is fed, ready to learn, ready to start their day and get the most out of their education is a critical, critical role in our schools, and we appreciate you so much. I won't pass the, I won't pass out. Do you want me to, anybody want to say anything? Yes. We have a, yes? No? Yeah? Okay. You're in a room full of, you're a big fan. We're all big fans.
I am grateful to serve in the Food Service Department. I'm thankful for this recognition, and I'd also like to give a shout out to my supervisor, Shane Logan, who nominated me. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you to Kareem for nominating me, excuse me, and I love my job, and I love working with the students. They're very fun.
Thank you again for everything that you do for our kids. Thank you and congratulations to all of tonight's honorees. Next, we have public comment. For this meeting, citizens were given the option of submitting their comments online or in person. Comments submitted via the online form were sent to the board prior to the start of tonight's meeting, posted to Board Doc site, and will be included in full as an addendum to the meeting minutes. In-person comments will be summarized by the board clerk and included in the official meeting minutes. Documents submitted along with in-person comments will, upon request, be distributed to the board but not included as part of the board's official minutes. Madam Clerk, would you please announce this evening's in-person speakers?
Madam Chair, we did not have any speakers sign up in advance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have this evening's superintendent's report from Dr. Murray.
First off, I want to say I don't know what we did to not have any public comment, but, okay. My real report, the first of three, thank you, Madam Chair. For this evening, the first presentation is something truly special. It is about the Monarch Market, where the products are created by the students themselves and require a great deal of research, which the students conduct via the internet as well as trial and error. For many, it can take months of work to have a product that is suitable for sale. To build a successful business, it not only takes a good idea, it takes money. Thanks to the Chesterfield Education Foundation, which provided $5,000 toward the academy for developing entrepreneurs through an innovation grant, these young entrepreneurs were able to have access to funds to purchase specialized equipment or resources they may not have been able to afford on their own. So, please enjoy this meaningful moment.
Today, we're having our grand opening of the Monarch Market, where we'll showcase all of our school spirit items that we've been working so hard on, as well as our student businesses that have also been working very hard to prepare for today. It's crazy to believe that today is actually finally come. We spent months and months planning, trying to make sure the designs are correct, and just all in all, it's just great.
This is all student-centered, so the students have made every decision. We started in April/May brainstorming some ideas. The kids got together over the summer. Our students have had a say in every single thing we've purchased, everything that's out there on the kiosk, the owner's manual, the employee manual on how to run it, everything is done by the students. We've collaborated with the Chesterfield Education Foundation. We received a $5,000 innovation grant from them, and so, that helped with the purchase of the kiosk. It gives the students an opportunity to increase school spirit across the campus, as well as making these items affordable for our specific demographic. We wanted to make sure that every student could participate, so we've kept all of our prices at a reasonable price point so that they can do that.
So, I have a partnership with the mixed business. We have popcorn, we have three different flavors. We have cinnamon compound, chili lime, and buffalo spice, and we've been in business for about one and a half years. So, in order to do the best we can to provide products that reach our goal target market, we're just getting an idea of how many customers fall into the salty mix, spicy, sweet, sour, what have you. And so, with that market research, we'll be able to combine new flavors for our customers. It really gives you an example of what it's like in the real world. A lot of us have never been to markets or have never sold a product a day in our lives, and so, just to have this opportunity for free, it's just a great experience, and so, this helps a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Board members, is there any discussion or comments? Ms. Chatters?
I would just say that Dr. Murray and I were the first people to purchase from the Meadowbrook Market, so I have my receipt as a memorabilia that I was the first customer. I do have some swag now, appreciate that. And if you have an opportunity to participate or drop by when they do have the market open, you're going to love it. The jerky is amazing. One of them was a little bit spicier than, you know, he led me to believe that it wasn't going to be that spicy, and I had to give it to my husband, right? Same, right? But the other ones are sweet and savory, so those of us on keto up here, we can eat jerky all day. So, please take an opportunity to go by there and participate, and I love what Ms. Tool is doing with the students and building their confidence in the process. So, if you haven't had a chance to talk to them about their business, you should hear them out. They're doing great things.
That's awesome.
Indeed, truly remarkable work. And before I move on to the next presentation, I think my favorite presenter, when you and I were out there, Ms. Chatters, were the two young ladies trying to pitch me to buy hair products. Yeah, they gave me their business card and everything.
They were trying to help you grow it back. That's what they were working on.
I promised them my children have great hair, and I would look into it. All right, so, on that note, a great segue into our next presentation is an update on communities and schools with Ashley Hall.
Hello, good evening. Well, you guys know typically I'm here talking about communities and schools, giving overviews and updates, and don't worry, I'll be back next month for that. But tonight, I'm really, really excited to highlight one of our amazing site coordinators and her incredible students and one of the programs that we're working on. So, you all have heard me talk about how different CIS services are across our schools, really based on need. But the common thread that we talk about is that they are grounded in what we call the Five Basics, those essentials that we believe every kid, every student needs to be successful. And today, we're really going to hone in on that fifth basic, a chance to give back to peers and the community. So, Stephanie Mardigian, one of our site coordinators at Byrd, is going to share how she has guided a small group of students in identifying school needs and taking meaningful action to create positive change.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to get to speak to you all this evening. Six years ago, CIS of Chesterfield began incorporating the asset-based Embrace Model in some of our high schools. In that time, students identified needs and worked on projects connected to peer-to-peer mentoring, student engagement. student engagement, and igniting senior pride. It is important that our students know that their voices matter and deserve to be heard because they have the potential to make a difference, no matter how great or small. Embrace gives students a platform to advocate and help drive change to better their school community. I take great pride in my role as a CIS site coordinator to help students discover how they use their strengths to make a difference. I'm so proud to have a few of our student leaders share their experience of Embrace at Byrd this year.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zoe. I am a junior at Byrd, and this is in fact my first year in Embrace. When we first started meeting this year, we spent a lot of time identifying our own assets and ways we could use them. We talked about potential things in our school that we felt, that we felt like needed to be addressed. Some of these areas included hallway congestion, school safety, and after-school clubs. These conversations helped us design a survey that captured a wide range of students' opinions. We distributed the survey in many ways. Students could access it through a QR code during lunch or through their Canvas. We made sure it was available in both English and Spanish because we wanted to reach as many students as possible. Surprisingly, we had over 300 responses. Many students told us that they were excited to share their thoughts on the changes that they wanted to see at Byrd.
Good evening. How y'all feeling today? Good? That's great, that's great. All right, so good evening. My name is Mikhail Ali, and I'm currently finishing up my senior year at Lloyd C. Byrd High School. And this is actually my first year participating in Embrace. So after, just like my colleague said, or my friend said, as I gathered responses from 333 students, we reviewed the results with the school administration to get their feedback before we selected the area that Embrace could have the greatest impact. Our principal, Ms. Blanton, was very supportive of our efforts, and she was very glad that so many students wanted to be a part of it. So we chose our, we chose to focus our efforts on Byrd Block, which is Byrd's version of like a study hall. Byrd Block is a 30-minute block of time given to students at the end of each class twice a week, which is Tuesdays and Wednesdays. It is designed for students to catch up on missing work, check and respond to Canvas messages, get help from teachers, and check student review for updated grades and seat time. Given all that teachers are responsible for, Byrd Block sometimes takes a backseat. As a result, teachers may continue teaching until the end of the class period, leaving less time for us to use that block as it was originally intended.
Good evening. My name is Tanaya. I'm a junior at Byrd, and this is my first year in Embrace.
Good evening. My name is Aiden, and I am a freshman at Byrd, and this is also my first year in Embrace.
Once we decided to focus on Byrd Block, the first thing we went to do was interview a few teachers to get their perspective on how they use it. After talking to them, we decided to create the Byrd Block Focus Slip. This slip encourages students to set a goal for each block and follow up on whether they met their goal. It also gives suggestions for other productive ways to use their time. We created a Google Form version of the Byrd Block Slip as a digital alternative to help students.
In February, we presented this to almost 200 staff members and shared how important this time is for us. Our hope is that the Byrd Block Slip will help encourage teachers to use the time as is, intending to help students stay on track and be held accountable.
I want to close with a thank you to Mrs. Blanton for her willingness to listen and empower our students. I'm so grateful to be a part of CIS as the work to lift up students' assets and create opportunities for kids to really shine. Thank you to the school board for giving us this time and this platform to showcase how these students use their strengths to make an impact at Byrd. I have been impressed by their commitment to advocate on behalf of their peers to help enhance their school environment. To me, this speaks to their potential as future leaders and changemakers. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much for coming. Board members, is there any discussion? Ms. Chatters?
Of course, these are my Skyhawks in front of me, and you guys did amazing. Very well done, very well presented. And I love the idea of keeping accountability both ways, right? You want to keep it what it was intended, so that's the teacher's part. And then you made your, your students accountable for actually doing something productive during Byrd Block. So I appreciate the effort that went into it, and great job.
Ms. Hudgens?
You guys did a great job. That was fantastic. I don't know if y'all have ever spoken in public before, but you did really, really great job. I had the privilege of riding on the bus, the CIS bus, the other day. I have a new friend over here, Stephanie, and of course, you know, the whole team. What you guys do is unmatched. It, can y'all speak to, isn't it really important, CIS, right? It's incredible. And this, the safe, do y'all have that really cool zen room? It's coming, I guess. Right? Okay, never mind. Anyway, it's, it's so sweet, it's so special, what they do and the way that you guys are giving back. That's incredible. Have y'all heard any positive comment from other, other classmates, other kids in the school? Yeah, are they like, "Yes!" Yeah, okay. That's awesome. Thank you guys for doing that. Well done you. And Ms. Ashley, thank you for everything that you do. You guys do such a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Pranta?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Future leaders standing right here in front of the board. There are adults that will come up here, and they might be public speaking, and they're just not comfortable with that, and that's fine. We understand that. But you spoke confidently and understanding what your passion was and what you wanted to relay. And I want to commend you for that. And I hope through this experience, and hopefully many more for you in the days, weeks, and years to come, not only in Chesterfield County Public Schools, but wherever life takes you, it's these moments here that you look back upon. If you ever doubt your ability to be a leader, think about what you have done with this. Because not everyone's going to stand up here and present to the board, and not everyone is going to put a passion of theirs into motion to see the favorable results. And then to get the feedback from your peers in regards to that, that can be scary to hear things that maybe you didn't want to hear. But if there's positive stuff, obviously, everyone wants to hear that. But I just want to encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. Congratulations.
Sepron?
I just have one question. If you guys can, just a quick show of hands. How many of you plan to go into policymaking when you're an adult? Because you're doing it. You're listening to your, you're listening to your constituency, you're, and you're making things happen. You're amazing, and I can't wait to see what you do next.
Thank you so much.
And before our last presentation, I just want to echo the comments that you all shared. Thank you. I want to thank our children for remaining for an hour and a half to have their time to shine. This evening just feels like it continues to give because kids have been on full display in their talents. I love my job more than when I walked in this evening. It's because of kids like that. But I think you can also see why we commit in our budget each year to matching Ashley's site expansion vision because we need more CIS programs positively influencing our students in Chesterfield County Public Schools. So thank you to her and to all of our CIS coordinators and staff. Madam Chair, the last presentation, well, I guess you're about to kill the mood, Sean, is, is on our 2025 legislative program.
Trying to soak in that recognition from Dr. Murray here for a second, so where do I go from here? So, you know. Madam Chair, board members, thank you for the opportunity to give you another update on the General Assembly session. As you know, we've had several conversations regarding the work from the General Assembly. What I'm going to talk about tonight is a little more legislative-driven. With that, with this short session, believe it or not, it was a short session, we tracked close to almost 300 bills, education-related. As you know, put together an Excel-driven tracker for the legislation, which I think was a good change, obviously, for our efforts this, this year. What I've done today and completed, and you have before you, and we posted on Board Docs late this morning, is an actual publication. We shared this today with our principals as well. We'll be posting it on our website and making it available to the community to see, not just the impacts on our school division, but some larger emphasis from the General Assembly from this session. The governor has, as you know, until March 25 to act on legislation. Action meeting, signing, amending, or vetoing legislation. That does include the budget. The veto session is April the 2nd. From that session, I'll prepare an additional update to this publication with regards to actions that the governor may take. From there, obviously, the work the board will take is looking closely at our policies we have in place. A lot of legislation is driven for July implementation. Not all of it is, but most of it is. And we'll have to adapt our policies where it is required. And looking though at this, this publication, I'll kind of walk you through some highlights with that. First of all, in the beginning of the publication, really talks about the, the budget deal. And obviously, that's part of the governor's actions he must take. Again, as we recall, a couple of highlights from that are the $1,000 bonus. I will say the General Assembly did hear for the very first time in quite some time the call from localities that there was no local match that was required. Obviously, we do know from our locality, though, it's just providing funding for the instructional positions. The board has taken a larger approach and looking at those funds, impacts it has on all of our employees. But we are thankful that General Assembly did not require a local match for that. Another big success was the funding of the support cap. That's been in place since the recession of 2008. We've advocated for that consistently, and we're excited to have that in place. One other highlight is recognition that the General Assembly may in fact have a special session at some point in time to deal with sort of what is the unknown from any impacts on the budget from what's happening in Washington DC and the federal government. We don't have any specific information with regards to impacts on our budget. The General Assembly has put in place two different committees from the House of Delegates and then from the Senate as well that will look at anything that's coming forward. Right now, their meetings have been, they've had one meeting, but it's largely been foundational about the impacts, really from the workforce impacts it would have from Washington DC as there's been some cuts put in place and what impacts those things would have on the Virginia's economy. Nothing specific education-wise just yet, but certainly that's something that we'll be tracking along the way. As I mentioned at the last meeting, another section was with regard to legislation from assessments. The State Board of Education has put in place an assessment system. The General Assembly has shown from time to time a difference of opinion on some of the efforts there. And we'll wait to see what the governor does with some of this legislation. Some of it has delayed enactments in there, and certainly the governor will have to look at that to reconcile, we assume, reconcile it in favor of what his State Board of Education has done and largely the work that we've been doing in our division to put those things in place because they're timeline-driven, and we've had to put those things in place immediately. There's topics in there with regards to career and technical education. Chad Macklin has done a wonderful job in already tracking a lot of things. When I went to Chad to show him some of the bills, he said he had those things on his list, which he always does. Collective bargaining has not been a topic necessarily in Chesterfield County proper, but the General Assembly continues to have discussions with regards to that. We will wait to see what the governor does on that, that legislation. Freedom of Information Act continues to be a topic of conversation, knowing that obviously our legal team handles that for our school division. Certainly understanding a lot of legislation that passed there is dealing with training. But also certainly there's that balance we always try to strike to make sure that we're being transparent as a school division, as a locality, understanding that there are some costs that are involved with regards to culling those records. Largely for our school division, a lot of it involves redaction with regards to student records and the requirements we have upon us for that. In the health section, there's a lot of different health legislation that was passed this year. And I'll, I'll end in this section with a, with a highlight. A couple of things to note is there is legislation with regards to heat illness that's largely requiring upon us to provide information to families and to coaches. There's also legislation with regards to cardiac emergency or emergency action plans that are required to have in place. The third piece is House Bill 1700, which deals with bleeding control programs, which essentially are bleeding control kits, which are requiring upon our school division. And we're already starting to work closely with Heather Snyder and our nurses implementing those pieces. I would note there was Senate Bill 799, which is with regards to the School Health Services Committee. That's a committee, actually, that I've referenced a lot, obviously, in my presentations to the school board. And the General Assembly did a pretty good job, save a couple of bills, but they have a pretty good job in using this committee. We've advocated in the past to utilize that committee when there is health-related legislation, that it goes to this committee, that it looks to understand the impacts on school division, largely the impacts financially. There was a legislation to continue that for another three years, that committee, and we're excited to kind of follow that committee and their work. They do have a number of bills that refer to them from this session, looking at the impacts it's going to have on school divisions. And we anticipate certainly that we'll have a presence from our school division in those conversations. Another highlight is with regards to notifications that are required. The notification pieces that are, that are required upon us already, some new ones that the General Assembly sought to put upon us. One I would note is that there is one bill with regards to parent notification with regards to firearms in the household. You may recall that last session, similar bill passed. The governor vetoed that bill, so we'll be tracking that piece. Two other things to note are with regards to notification for imminent risk of suicide. Anecdotally, I will say there's things that we're already doing in our school division. And the next piece is with regards to overdose notifications, permification. There'll have to be some reconciliation with regards to the legislation that's passed, what's already required upon us. Essentially, big picture, what's required upon us is a notification to everyone in our school division. Actually, the General Assembly passed legislation narrowing that notification, so it would just be to a particular school that's impacted. So again, that's, that's certainly another example of something we're looking to see some reconciliation from the governor. I would note that there were a number of resolutions passed this General Assembly session. We continually have an active legislative delegation. A highlight of that really was some work done with regard to committing Bonner Elementary School in their 100th anniversary, and they have a celebration coming up. And I think Ms. Hudgens is planning to attend, as well as maybe Dr. Hi, in that celebration at the end of March. And that, we anticipate both Delegate Jones and Senator Servant may be there to present that resolution. On the front of safety requirements, a couple of things that passed. I would note anecdotally, there is one thing that we've actually advocated for, for several years, and certainly through the work of Ernie Longworth. And it's Senate Bill 1124, it deals with driver education programs. And we've advocated that there be an online provision with regard to driver education classroom training. And for the first time, the General Assembly did pass that legislation. We're anxious to see that signed by the governor. We think that'll allow our families an additional avenue to complete that requirement. Underneath school building and facilities, I would note that Senate Bill 1307 is a bill that's been passed. It deals with local sales and use tax. Obviously, our school board doesn't have that constitutional authority to pass that. But what it does allow is it authorizes counties and cities to impose an initial local sales and use tax at a rate not to exceed 1%, and that would go towards school capital projects. Last year, this bill did pass, the governor vetoed it. Localities generally have asked for, that they have that tool in their toolbox. They've not committed to utilizing that if they need to. But certainly, we'll be tracking that piece, understanding that could potentially provide, notwithstanding the requirements upon the locality for the referendum. But certainly, that may provide us some additional resources for school capital projects. A couple of the quick things just to highlight is staffing and training. Couple of things were passed. I would note that there, one of the top bills there is House Bill 1626, which deals with trainings that are required for non-academic training activities. That's for teachers, that anything that's required, non-academic training. The General Assembly had a perspective which we strongly supported and that we looked closely at all the trains that are required upon our employees. And they, they, they supported that piece. I will note that there, in looking at the legislation they did pass, there are some concerns with some of the language. concerns with some of the language that's involved in the training pieces and whether or not actually it will do what they strive to have done. And so the, I know the governor's office is looking at that legislation to see kind of how they can reconcile both the intent of that and also what's written down, obviously, on paper, which is, didn't go as far as we thought it would. One other highlight is actually a little bit random, but also in a positive way, and it's House Bill 1993, which provides for the first time, and I say the first time, this bill's been introduced year after year, and it's always been killed, but it allows for this display of advertising on school buses. So essentially, it'll allow you to, essentially, to have an advertisement. Now, I'll tell you upfront, it's a pretty nominal piece. It's like a 10 by 10 piece, but certainly it would, I think you'd have to be right up on the bus to see it, but certainly it would be something that we'd want to kind of pursue, obviously, to have another potential asset to obviously advertise to those who may seek employment with our school division. The last piece that I'll highlight is, which I mentioned in our last board presentation, is the House Bill 2201, Senate Bill 1230, which deals with the extension of 90 to 180 teaching days for those who may be able to temporarily employ in the school division. As I mentioned last time when I presented, we're looking to see kind of what happens with that legislation. Our largest piece, as you know, is that we do have a qualified person in front of each of our students. This is certainly a last resort for our school division. We do have some well-qualified folks who are filling those roles, but we want to see this at least extended for a period of time. The General Assembly has made it very clear that they, they put this in place back into the COVID days, but certainly as we still have a need for teachers in the classroom, obviously, if that was to go away immediately, we'd have a very immediate impact to the tune of 200 positions that would impact us that would go away. So we're continuing to advocate for that legislation to pass. The last piece is with regards to student conduct. As I mentioned last time, we're going to look closely at our cell phone policy, depending on how the governor does act on the legislation there, and we'll bring that back, obviously, to the board, and that'll be an important conversation. I'll pause there and say I've covered a lot of ground very quickly about some general highlights from the legislation piece. Again, from this presentation, I'll come back in April, give highlights from what's happened to veto session. We've put this already in front of our principals today, they can begin to kind of digesting some of the information that's there. Obviously, I'll come back to you through my work in the policy front in your June meeting to adopt any policies that we need to have in place for July 1, and certainly continue to advocate on behalf of our school division. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board members, is there any discussion? Sephran?
I just want to say thank you for this. We were joking, you know, I know you were joking, but this is a phenomenal tool for me, and I won't speak for anybody else. I mean, this is great to have. I mean, the Excel sheet is helpful, but this really helps contextualize it, and you said 300, there were 300 proposed bills that, just in this session. So this really, this is wonderful, and I appreciate you and your team on the work that you guys put into this. And I'm going to read this, and I'm going to, I'm going to study it, and I'm going to completely wonk out on it. It's really, it's good. So thanks.
Well, thank you. I would note the online version, they have links there for the legislation, so if you click on that, it takes you right to the bill too, so that's a good resource, but thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Hudgens.
I just want to say, I love the way this is structured. It is easily accessible, and I don't want to exactly say what Ms. Heffron said, but it is very well structured, and I was, you know, sometimes I forget to read titles and things, and you were able to navigate me through it even despite myself, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have action items. Mr. Carson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Murray, you have in front of you memo number 039-25. This is for the three school electrical gear replacement contract award. The three schools are Salem Church Middle School, Robius Middle School, and Carver Career Academy. Two bids were received by the Chesterfield County Procurement Department on January 30 of this year for this project. The low bid of the two was for $1.641 million to Triad Electrical Solutions for this effort. They have been determined to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for this effort, and an award recommendation has been made for Triad by the school's architect, engineer, Dewberry Engineers. There is no fiscal impact to the overall major maintenance project or effort by awarding this project to Triad. There is ample, there are ample funds available in the major maintenance key for this effort, and with your passage this evening, we hope to get work, to work on this project in the summer of 2026. And you may ask why 2026. Equipment of this type is very long lead, generally takes between 12 and 18 months to procure and get on site, so we tend to plan for these projects roughly 18 to 24 months in advance, and we've got a lot more coming. Staff recommends that the school board authorize the procurement director to award this contract to Triad Electrical Solutions for said project in the amount of $1,641,103, and to approve any necessary change orders up to the full budgeted amount for this project, and so endeth the memo.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Board members, may I have a motion to approve memo number 039-25 as presented? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Board members, is there any discussion? There has been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call roll on the motion.
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye. Memo number 039-25 is approved. Next, we have items for board review. Madam Clerk, would you please read the items for this evening?
Madam Chair, tonight's agenda includes the following items for board review. Number one, Magisterial District Improvement Funds FY 2025. Number two, FY 2025 January expenditures versus appropriations. Number three, budget change requests summary across categories, January 2025. Number four, budget committee reports. And number five, pre-K update, January 2025. And number six, FY 2025 quarterly budget review mid-year.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have this evening's superintendent's remarks. Dr. Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a handful of acknowledgements and updates. First of all, to the community that's tuning in, a reminder that we are moving, consolidating both of our central office spaces to the Spring Line Drive site. A very extensive and comprehensive effort that began the move proper yesterday. I want to thank Josh and Scott and the rest of the team that's helping out for that very coordinated effort. To the community, however, our phone numbers will be changing. If you're used to contacting some central office personnel, for instance, at Kraus Road, you will be greeted with a voicemail that will give you the new phone number to make any such transitions a little more painless for the community. And worth a big footnote here, probably the actual headline of us moving, is it will give way to a renovation of the upstairs at CTC at Hull, which will allow 650 new seats to support our award-winning program there, so we're certainly excited about that. Kim would want me to mention that we're also hiring for basically any and all positions. We've got several upcoming job fairs, so please consider or refer. The video, we recently shared their memo for, or pertaining to flexible learning. This allows us to reclaim absences in exchange for in-person learning. So three hours of makeup time equals one less absence on a student's record this year. So as we consider chronic absenteeism and how we combat it, this is one such way that we've asked schools to begin planning, so families be on the lookout for how we can, more intentionally than a remote learning day, make up some instructional time while removing absences along the way. Mr. Meister and I will present tomorrow at the Board of Supervisors meeting our budget to them, answer any questions they may have. I think we thought we might be off the presentation carousel, but alas, we are not, but excited to spend some time with our county friends tomorrow. Exciting news, probably stealing some thunder here, but you know what? I don't care tonight. I'm going to regret that I said that, but I'll lead off with Monakin Swim and Dive. Now completed the four-peat, six out of seven years, they, their swim and dive team are the state champions for Class Four, which means any senior that participated since their freshman year doesn't know how to compete without winning a state championship, so it's pretty impressive. Along the way, we had several students competing in indoor track or wrestling where they earned individual state championships, too many to mention, but we are still in contention for another team state championship on Friday, mid-afternoon. Manchester will defend, their girls will defend their state championship basketball title, so we're excited for them. And then finally, in the spirit of Women's History Month, I just want to say that representation and leadership matters, and 80% of this board are wonderful, phenomenal leaders that are creating a legacy ripple that will outlive your lifetime. So thank you for the impactful work you do. Steve, I'm sure I'll find some time later in another month to recognize you, but tonight, thank you, Dot, Lisa, Ann, and Dominique. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Next, we have announcements, communications, and school board comments. School board members, are there any announcements or comments this evening? Ms. Chatters?
Just wanted to remind those who are still listening that the town hall with our Board of Supervisors representative is on March 17 at 6:30 at the Beulah Rec Center, so please come and advocate there for the local dollars, because that is where we need your voice. And then my call to action for anybody who is still listening, if you wanted to do something to help get our schools fully funded here in Chesterfield County, email your governor, because that is where the bill is, all these bills are going next, and just let him know that you support public education and you hope that he continues to do the same, so that we can get the funding that we need in order to continue to excellent work that our staff is doing with not the right amount of resources. So let's continue to advocate for that, and that is all I have.
Ms. Hudgens?
In similar vein, we have tomorrow night at 6:30 at Manchester Middle School, it is the Midlothian District Town Hall for the county budget. If you have any words to say, please come and say them, and also listen, it'll be great. Thank you.
Mr. Pronto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. March 18 at 6:30 will be the Matoka Budget Town Hall at CTC at the Hull campus, so encourage folks to come out to that. Also, I know we spoke about it earlier, but I got to brag, because Matoka District is just doing phenomenal things, and we're hiring phenomenal people. When you can take somebody from one school, knowing that they're going to do well, and put them in a brand-new school with all the confidence that we have, I'm not sure that can be said just for anybody. And Dr. Jones has done a phenomenal job at Grange Hall, and so we look forward to what she's going to do at the Western Area Elementary School, to be named, and also at Mosley Elementary with Ms. Parnell, replacing, again, another promotion from the Matoka District, Dr. Dubiel, who was promoted into leadership for elementary schools. And so, great things there in Matoka, and I believe we also had some really exciting things going on at Cosby. We had a state winner in Cosby as well. I didn't hear you mention her name, Dr. Murray, so I'm going to put you back on the spot.
Yes, sir. So when I mentioned that there were too many individual state champions, yeah, to note that.
All right, I'll let that go. I'll let that go. I'll let that go. We'll say that for another time, but just greatly appreciate the concerned citizens of Ettrick attended their meeting last night, and they are excited about what's happening at CECLAM, but are also looking to see how we can make that work in the Matoka District for our Ettrick and Matoka communities. So more conversation with this board to have on that, because we know that it's a great program, and we want to stretch that as far and as wide as we can. And so with that being said, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Heffron?
Thank you. Unsurprisingly, Cloverhill is also having a budget town hall meeting. That's Wednesday, March 19. I will be there along with Jessica Schneider, our Board of Supervisors representative for the Cloverhill District. I also want to remind everybody, if you are, I would say, a Chesterfield resident with more experience, that you have an opportunity to get your champion Chesterfield champion card. Very exciting stuff. It's your ticket, it's your ticket in to all of the wonderful stuff that you saw tonight, that you saw our students do. That's your ticket to enjoy that live and in person. And in case you missed it earlier, Monakin High School Swim and Dive, state champs.
Last, but certainly not least, the Bermuda District County Town Hall is on Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Chester Library. Oh, yes, Dr. Murray.
I apologize. Ms. Hudgens, you mentioned your town, or Midlothian Town Hall is tomorrow, it's Thursday. I know it's felt like a long day, but I didn't want anybody showing up and you getting emails that John Phillips would be responding to, so. It's Thursday, the 13th.
Thomas Dale, or Bermuda District, is the following Thursday on March 20, and it's at the Chester Library, not at Thomas Dale. And then I just want to do a shout-out to Thomas Dale's show choir. They walked away with lots of bling from the latest competition, so very proud of our nightingales at Thomas Dale. Isn't that awesome? Go ahead, Ms. Chatters.
I'm sorry, I had one other alibi. For those of us who have rising ninth graders, this is the window of specialty center acceptance. So for those of us who are going through it for the first time, or not the first time, just so that you're calm, you're going to be on the waitlist, and that's okay, right? So that is not a denial. You still have an opportunity to get into the specialty center of your choice. The deadline to accept is March 17. So what would happen is if your child has a waitlist option and it turns into an acceptance, they have until March 17 to say yes or no to that particular school, and also they need to be saying yes or no to the waitlist as well. And then once that period is over, as people roll off of the waitlist, then openings, if after you say yes or no, then that's when openings open up. So just a personal experience, my son, who only applied to one place to give his mother a heart attack, he got waitlisted, and then he got into his school, so it does happen, so just relax. And if you don't get what you want, just know that we have a fabulous CTC that can give you an opportunity to take some of those classes that you wanted a specialty center for, so please keep that in mind as an option. And all of my parents who are going into the eighth grade, start paying attention now to what those things are, so you can help better level-set your child on what to do when they get to that position. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The school board will hold a work session on Tuesday, April 8, 2025, at 4:00 PM here in the public meeting room. It will be followed by a business meeting at 6:30 PM. If there's no further business, we need a motion to adjourn. So moved. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dot Heffron.
Aye.
Dominique Chatters. Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Ann Coker.
Aye. The motion carries. The March 11, 2025 School Board Business Meeting is adjourned.